Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Board of County Commissioners Quarterly Awards and Recognition Ceremony. Would everyone want to turn it over to Commissioner White for the pledge and invocation? Will everyone please rise?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every due justice and for all.
Heavenly Father, I'm thankful that we are able to recognize people today for doing great things within our community and to raise awareness for various important causes within our community. I would like to pray that you continue to bless these individuals that are behind all of these good things, continue to guide them into further good deeds and a job well done within our community. As always, Lord, I ask for blessings for our first responders and members of our armed forces, that you will guide them and comfort them and keep them safe each and every day. I ask for all of these blessings and give all these thanks in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for attending today's quarterly awards and recognition ceremony. The ceremony celebrates the residents, employees who work to accomplish and help Hillsborough County to be the great place for all of us to live, work, and play. And if you wouldn't mind doing me a favor, please remain throughout the entire ceremony. And sometimes we get to the end and everyone's gone. We have two or three people sitting here, so if you can, please, please stay throughout the entire ceremony. Before we start, I'd like to read a memo into the record from Commissioner Smith. Since please be advised that due to a prior commitment, I'll be unable to attend today's BLCC award ceremony, please read this reason of my absence in the record. And to start things off, I'll present the first two commendations. You have to shake hands, man. Wow, now you got a problem. Okay, I'm going to present the first commendation, the State Attorney's Community Council. State Attorney Andrew Warren come forth, and Jaylen Robinson from the Brothers United Building Brothers Alliance, is he here? Okay, Freddie Barton's going to come, safe and sound. Okay. "The Office of the State Attorney for the 13th Judicial Circuit builds a safer community while promoting justice and fairness for all. The office has been steadfast in its duties, building trust with residents. To enhance this trust, the office created the State Attorney's Community Council, which represents the diversity of Hillsborough County. The combination illustrates how the council efforts have positively impacted our community." And the combination reads as follows. "State Attorney's Office Community Council, the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners, is pleased to recognize the State Attorney's Office Community Council for its active engagement in policymaking and community outreach to improve public safety in Hillsborough County. Since 2018, the State Attorney's Office Community Council has been instrumental in addressing community concerns and increasing transparency and understanding of the criminal justice system. Consisting of 25 representatives from partners, organizations, and at-large community members, the council has shown an unwavering commitment to promoting government accountability and facilitating effective policymaking initiatives by the State Attorney's Office. Its members proudly serve as ambassadors between their network and the office, ensuring that the State Attorney's Office is in touch with the needs of its constituents. The council is indeed a true collaborative voice for the community. The Board of Hillsborough County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend the State Attorney's Office Community Council for its exemplary accomplishments and outreach in the criminal justice system, awarded its 11th day of March 2020, signed by the seven members of County Commission." Let's see if you have your words.
Sure, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Since day one, our office has been proactively engaged with the community to promote transparency and to build trust with the community that we serve. Over the past three years, we have held regular forums, published an annual report. We recently completed our first-ever business academy that brought leaders from our business community in to get a deep dive into what happens every day in the criminal justice system. In March of 2018, we launched this community council, an advisory group of volunteers, for candid dialogue, to share concerns about the community, and to gain insight into what we do every day and how we make our community safer. These 25 members of the council represent the rich diversity of our community in terms of geography, demographics, professional experience. These are all people with impressive records of civic engagement in our community. And for the past two years, members have been meeting every other month with me and my executive team to learn about what happens every day in the system, to learn about our policies and how they make our community safer. But the community council has done more than just talk. It has taken action. They've helped us update our victim assistance program by making the materials more victim-friendly. They helped diversify our victim outreach with partner organizations like the Hispanic Services Council, Equality Florida, the Junior League in Care. And they're now completing what we call legacy projects, a mock trial for DUI for high school students to highlight the perils of underage drinking, and a safer, stronger art project that we're doing in partnership with Hillsborough County Public Schools. This has been a two-year commitment for our community council members, and now it's been two years, so I'm sorry, guys, I'm going to have to kick you out. But first, I just want to say thanks. Thank you to Commissioner Miller and the entire county commission for recognizing the contributions of our council members, caring citizens who volunteered each more than 60 hours of time to advance our mission of public safety. And of course, most importantly, to thank the members themselves, many of whom are here today, for their time, their input, and their commitment to our community. Your work enthusiasm and public service has really helped us to build a safer, stronger Hillsborough. Thank you.
You have members here that can give it?
We do.
Yeah, come on up, take a picture. Come on. I'll take a picture. Come on.
Squeeze in and then say it. Throw a fire or something.
So he probably got a haircut for the day, Santiago Carrata and Patrick Harrison. Is anyone else from your staff is here? Yeah, come on up. Good morning, sir. How are you? Good morning. Visit Tampa Bay's hard work and creative drive have resulted in the organization being recognized by the Hospitality Sales and Marketing Association International with numerous awards. Visit Tampa Bay has given our region a loud voice in a crowded and competitive global tourism market. For this achievement, the Board of County Commissioners will present Visit Tampa Bay with this commendation. And let me say this, I've had the opportunity to serve on the board, but I've been working with Santiago and some of his staff for a number of years in bringing conferences to Hillsborough County in Tampa. And we are by far the best-kept secret in the world, not for much longer because of what the work of Visit Tampa Bay is doing in bringing conferences to Hillsborough County in Tampa. We're going to probably slow down a little bit because of the virus, but I'm quite sure he has a plan with his staff, once that's out the way, to start bringing those conferences back in here and having our hotels filled. That's important. We call it putting heads in beds. So, the commendation reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Visit Tampa Bay for significantly expanding tourism in Tampa Bay. Work that it recently earned the numerous 2019 Adrian Awards for marketing. Founded in 1985, the nonprofit company has been instrumental in generating economic prosperity for Hillsborough County through innovative outreach that has led to years of record-breaking tourism revenues. Visit Tampa Bay is funded partly by the tourist development tax collections. It works with hundreds of partners across the region to provide highly qualified, high-quality resources that support marketing, advertising, and promotion programs. Those programs showcases what Hillsborough County offers visitors from across the country and around the world. Its marketing campaigns have led to $6.6 billion in overall economic impacts across the county, including more than 53,000 jobs and associate incomes of over $2.1 billion." Courtesy of its creative advertising programs, Visit Tampa Bay was recently honored with the eighth Adrian Awards for 2019 marketing efforts, the most of any Florida destination that year. That's everybody in the state of Florida. The latest accolade is a testament to the company's commitment to creating healthy economic development for the region. "The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Visit Tampa Bay for its steadfast dedication in enhancing the county's status as a world-class tourism destination, and congratulates it for its well-deserved commendations and achievements, awarded its 11th day of March 2020, signed by the seven members of County Commission." Santiago? Say a few words? I'm not going to shake your hand now. That's a hug.
Thank you, Honorable Commissioner Miller. Thank you to this body, all of our esteemed commission members, county staff, and the people of Hillsborough County that support what we do each and every day. This team, I brag about all the time, is the best in the world, and to win Adrian Award, eight Adrian Awards confirms that. This team competes against countries, huge establishments, Hilton, Marriott, worldwide, to bring visitors to this destination, and what they do matters each and every day to the economic vitality of our community. And we see that. We see the development that's going on, and that's because of the visitors that this incredible team are drawing here to Tampa, Hillsborough County. And we need it today more than ever. We really do. The importance of tourism and the economics of tourism matter. They matter to our neighbors. They matter to the people who live here. They matter as far as sales tax and taxes that are collected from visitors. So in light of this new situation that we're facing, we need to market and continue to take proactive positions on providing factual information so that we are dealing with fact and science and not paranoia and panic. Because the worst thing we can do is make a bad situation even worse by having an economic downturn. So again, thank you to all of you that support us all the time, every day, and thank you again, Commissioner, for bringing to light the great work of this incredible team.
One of my commendations is for water conservation.
No, I'll just do, no, no, I'll just do one pass if she doesn't make it.
Okay.
I'm good.
Sure.
No, I'm catching up.
Commissioner Oberman will make the next two presentations.
These are always great days because we get to celebrate some of the excellence in Hillsborough County. And during a time like this, it's great to be able to celebrate our emergency management division director, Tim Dudley. Could you please come forward? How you doing? It's good to see you. Yeah, we got this. The, you know, it's times like these that we realize how important it is to work with our, all of our team members to make sure that our community stays safe, whether we're dealing with a virus, whether we're dealing with fires, whether we're dealing hurricanes, or a, or some kind of attack that we're not sure about. And it's those individuals that serve us so well that we come to depend on, but frequently we don't hear enough about. Mr. Dudley has a strong background in strategic planning, emergency preparedness, and with more than 10 years of senior-level management experience. Before joining Hillsborough County as Emergency Management Division Director in April of 2019, Mr. Dudley was Senior Emergency Management Coordinator for Pinellas County. So we benefited from a little steal there. Prior to that, he had a distinguished 27-year career with the United States Army, including the J-63 Operations Sergeant Major with U.S. Special Operations Command at MacDill Air Force Base. Mr. Dudley's success while demonstrating unselfish commitment to the community led the National Forum for Black Public Administrators to award him with the Marks of Excellence Award, an outstanding achievement. Congratulations, Mr. Dudley. Hillsborough County is very fortunate to have you at the helm of our emergency management system. I think I'm going to be seeing you tomorrow, again, several times in the next few weeks. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Commissioner. First of all, I'd like to thank the entire Board of County Commissioners and the Tampa Bay chapter of the NF PBA for this recognition. It's certainly humbling. I've had the opportunity to serve communities at the federal and local level for over 30 years now. And the reason I stand here before you is for all the leaders and mentor and team members that have poured into me. So I accept this on their behalf and proud to be in Hillsborough County here to continue working and look forward to our success as a community as we move through this pandemic that we face today. Thank you.
Thank you. And this wonderful little tool is for you. That's to hold down all of your emergency management papers. Thank you so much. Let's have a photo. Yeah, it's important that we sing the song of our unsung heroes, and he's definitely one of our team. I am getting a wonderful opportunity to share with you an amazing employee that works with Hillsborough County. Would driver Maggie Allen from the Sunshine Line please join me at the podium? Is Maggie here? Maggie? I want you to know that the Sunshine Line is so important and makes such an impressive statement to our community members. I was driving him, my grandson, to school yesterday, and he saw the Sunshine Line bus. He goes, "There it is, Grandma! There's the Sunshine Line." Because we got a chance to ride it at an event where Sunshine was helping people move from one place to another. Sunshine Line drivers have shown an amazing commitment in providing safe, reliable, door-to-door transportation for elderly, low-income, and people with disabilities who have not or cannot have transportation on their own. One of those drivers is standing here today. Every day for 21 years, Ms. Allen has dedicated herself to ensuring quality customer service as she transports residents throughout our community. She always greets her passengers with a smile and a warm hello, which you can tell she always has on her face, it seems. Her safety record has been impeccable with a smile and a warm hello, and she has a zero at-fault or non-preventable accidents and has driven over 781,000 miles throughout her career, making her one of the drivers with the most miles driven at the Sunshine Line. And for those of you that drive around Hillsborough County, you know how impressive that truly is. Even if you're the best driver ever, that's not an easy task, so congratulations. Ms. Allen has also shown unwavering tenacity during weather emergencies. She's served over 30 cold-weather storm activations in the last five years, often transporting the homeless to local shelters when temperatures have dropped to dangerous levels. When Hurricane Irma threatened our region in 2017, Ms. Allen spent 50 hours driving residents with special needs to safe locations. For her hard work and commitment to her passengers, Ms. Allen became the recipient of the Florida Commission for Transportation Disadvantaged 2019 Driver of the Year Award. Congratulations. And we're going to offer you this.
First, I want to give honor and thanks to the commissioners for having me here this morning. But you know, it's not all about me. I think of my mom, who just turned 74 this past February the 27th, my dad, who's going to be 80 November the 27th. I make it about the clients. I make it about how I want my parents, my children, my grandchildren to be treated, how everyone should be treated equally, fair, and fine. Treat it with a smile, greet it with a smile, with a hello. It's not hard. It's very easy. It's in here. It was installed in here as a little child. And I want to give thanks, this is for all of Hillsborough County and for my immediate family, Sunshine Line, giving thanks. I want to give a special thanks to our director, Scott Clark, for his dedication and for allowing us to make the clients first, to make the clients number one. Because without the clients, there will be no Sunshine Line, and I thank you all. Can I have a photo?
Come on up. We'll get a photo together.
Thank you.
Congratulations, all of you. Apparently, all of y'all are supposed to get up here.
Appreciate you.
I appreciate you. It's okay, I really need some time, I surrender.
Commissioner Merman will do the next three recognitions.
Thank you for your patience. I couldn't be more excited to give this award to somebody who's really an unsung hero here at the county. And I would like to call him forward, Tom Fessler. He is our Assistant County Administrator for Financial Services. And I would also like his team to join me up here at the podium, Bonnie and the whole Come on up. Don't be shy, Kevin, everyone. So if you ever wonder how the water gets turned on, the stoplights work, all those little things, this financial team makes sure it happens here in Hillsborough County because they are getting the resources to the right departments to make sure that this county operates very, very well every single day. We have, as you can see, a very talented team of financial professionals who've earned many prestigious certifications in numerous fields. These dedicated individuals help our county continue to strengthen its financial fiscal foundation. This year, the Florida Government Finance Officers Association is recognizing government finance professionals across the state with its first Government Finance Professional Week celebration. And in support of that, I am pleased to present this proclamation. And it's a pretty long one, so I think I'll try and abbreviate. It says, "Whereas government finance professionals serve Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners and Hillsborough County Constitutional Officers promoting prosperity by ensuring sound fiscal management, fruitful investments, and diligent accounting, among other services. Whereas the government finance professionals who serve the Board of County Commissioners hold degrees in accounting, finance, economics, business administration, and public administration. Whereas they have earned numerous credentials, including Certified Public Accountant, Certified Government Finance Officer, Certified Internal Auditor, Certified Information Systems Auditor, Certified Fraud Examiner, and Project Management Professional. The impact of these dedicated professionals extends well beyond Hillsborough County as they serve on or lead a variety of statewide committees of the Florida Government Finance Officers Association. Founded in 1937, the Florida Government Finance Officers Association serves more than 3,300 professionals from state, county, and city governments, colleges, and universities, special districts, and private firms. Whereas the Florida Government Finance Officers Association, as member governmental organizations, are sponsoring the inaugural Government Finance Professionals Week, which recognizes government finance professionals and the vital services they provide Hillsborough County throughout the state. So now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare March 16 through March 20, 2020, as Government Finance Professionals Week in Hillsborough County encourages all residents to extend their appreciation to all government finance professionals throughout Florida and Hillsborough County for their hard work, dedication, and leadership. And I'm so proud to present this to Tom Fessler and his team, and of course Bonnie Wise, who I always call is our CFO for the county. And I'd love for you to say a few words, Tom.
Sure. Commissioner Merman, I just want to thank you for the proclamation along with the other commissioners. I know I've been with the county for about 18 years now. There are over probably 100 financial professionals within the county, a very talented group of people. I'm very lucky to work at Hillsborough County. I want to, you know, thank everybody. Every day is a different challenge. You will come in with a plan, and it changes by the time, you know, half hour into the day. But it's been, it's a very rewarding experience, and I want to thank Mike Merrill, my boss, Bonnie Wise, and again, thank you very much for the proclamation.
Really, thank you, every single one of you. Well, look around, it's a big group. And for all you do to really keep us in really good, sound financial situations. You know, we have a AAA bond rating, and it's because of all the activities that you all do every single day to keep us in the top tier. So we're very, very proud of you. So let's take a picture. So let's take a picture. It's just like the numbers you work on every day, just compress, right?
Mr. Fessler, Ms. Wise, does your staff have any dying things they have to do for about the next 30 minutes? Nothing? Just have them have a seat, don't leave. People are leaving, and I don't want, that's the biggest group, don't leave yet.
We're working on our budget right now, so we try and keep them as happy as possible, right? Thank you. Okay, my next recognition, I'd like to ask Coach Andy Chasenoff, Allison Hughes, and Yasmin Rodriguez from Parks and Recreation to please come forward. And of course, Rick Valdez, come on up. How are you? Oh, wow. I just wanted to give some recognition to this coach. He is a therapeutic recreational specialist for Parks and Rec. Andy Chasenoff has worked wonders. He uses sports to help children and teenagers achieve victory over personal obstacles and challenges. I'm thrilled to recognize his outstanding public service with a commendation on the occasion of his retirement from the county. Has that already happened, or?
It happened last month.
It did, okay. Well, we're glad you could come back. And I know, I'm going to read this, but I know the kids already miss you quite a bit. And I just want you to know Hillsborough County is going to miss you too. So I'll read this recognition. It says, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Coach Andy Chasenoff for bringing happiness to children and teenagers with disabilities through sports and unwavering devotion that has enhanced their lives, helped them overcome numerous obstacles. A therapeutic recreation specialist for Hillsborough County Parks and Recreation. The past 18 years, Mr. Chasenoff has coached athletes with physical disabilities for half a century." Wow, an amazing achievement. Inspired by his summer job on Long Island, New York, helping children with cerebral palsy when he was 16, Mr. Chasenoff is a beacon for young people with physical and intellectual challenges, some very severe. Known as Coach Andy, he has taught more than 1,000 athletes to play soccer, tennis, basketball, and numerous other sports activities that not only improve their physical fitness, but they raise their spirits, self-esteem, and confidence. He's a member of the National Wheelchair Athletic Association Hall of Fame. Mr. Chasenoff began sports programs in New Jersey, Connecticut, and now Florida. He has empowered athletes to participate in international events and helped develop them into even better people. And Mr. Chasenoff is a true champion. And the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby commend Coach Andy Chasenoff for enabling dreams to come true, thanks him for his services, and wishes him best in his retirement. And I'm so pleased to present this, signed by all seven county commissioners. Would you like to say a few words?
Of course.
Okay, good.
I'm very honored by this commendation. For the past 18 years, I've had my dream job. With the support of Hillsborough County Parks and Rec, Rick Valdez, Board of County Commissioners, friends at the county parks, I've been able to provide sports and recreation programs for individuals with disabilities. It has been a tremendous opportunity for them to grow and for me to grow as a person. Although the program's been ranked in one of the top athletic programs in the country, I think we're most proud that 31 of our athletes that have come through the program have either gone to college or have graduated from college. And I think that that truly is the mark of the program. I'm very honored to be here today, and I enter retirement with mixed emotions, but I have to tell you, it was the first time I had to use my alarm clock in the last month, so.
That was great. Rick, do you want to say anything?
Thank you, commissioners, for recognizing Andy. You know, Andy don't like to take credit for all the amazing work he's done, and he failed to mention that we have one individual in our program that has been invited to Thailand to compete in the games currently. So he's going to be missed by all of us. It's going to be hard to replace him. I always tell him that he'll never be replaced because that's how I feel, but just want to thank Andy for all his years of dedicated service and really for establishing a program that we can, that we have to grow from here. So thank you.
Of course, April is Water Conservation Month, and I have been on the Tampa Bay Water Board since I've been on this commission, which is in 2010. And I love to talk about water. So I'm pleased to present this. I'd like to ask David Glicksberg, Division Director Kevin Moran from Water Resources, and the whole team, just come on up here and join me at the podium. Is that it? Is Kevin here?
No, he wasn't able to make it.
Oh, okay. Public Utilities, its skilled staff have done an amazing job in providing clean drinking water and wastewater treatment services to unincorporated Hillsborough County. The department's public outreach on water conservation has been instrumental in our community's growth. This proclamation for Water Conservation Month and Florida Water Reuse Week drives home the importance of water conservation. And I'd like to read this into the record. It says, "Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, and freshwater is the most precious natural resource. Since 1999, Hillsborough County has joined the state of Florida in designating April as Water Conservation Month to teach residents ways they can help save Florida's water resources. Whereas water reuse conserves Florida's limited water resources, and Water Reuse Florida has designated May 17 through May 23, 2020, as Florida Water Reuse Week. Whereas Hillsborough County Public Utilities Administration promotes water conservation through a wide variety of educational efforts, community outreach, water use restrictions, agency partnerships, and construction of reclaimed water systems. Whereas Public Utilities Administration partners with Hillsborough County Extension Service to promote the use of Florida-friendly landscaping. Whereas such conservation efforts have resulted in a steady decrease in the average daily water use per person in Hillsborough County from 146 gallons in 1989 to the current level of 98 gallons. Whereas small steps can make a difference, and water conservation is as easy as installing simple water-saving devices in the home and using Florida-friendly landscaping techniques. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare April 2020 as Water Conservation Month and May 17 through May 23, 2020, as Florida Water Reuse Week. In Hillsborough County, calls upon all residents to promote water-saving measures and take appropriate steps to conserve and protect this vital resource." And thank you, David, for all you do for us and to help with water conservation, and would you like to say a few words?
Good morning. Just like to say thank you to you, Commissioner Merman, and to the entire board for this proclamation. And thank you to the board and the administration for their leadership and continued support for our water conservation programs, and for their support for furthering the integration of our water resources and strengthening them through the recognition that all water, no matter what form it is, surface water, groundwater, potable water, wastewater reclaimed, stormwater, is all one water, and to be valued as the precious resource that it is. Thank you.
And can we have Forrest Turberville, Director of Conservation Environmental Lands Management, please join me here where I'm missing, and the team? Let's... Oh, there you are. I don't know why I couldn't... That's how it always happens. And what a team. Mr. Turberville and his staff do a wonderful job managing our Jan K. Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program, better known as ELAP, I think, a model program for Florida and the Southeast U.S. A big part of this effort is protecting our ecologically vital wetlands, and I'm proud to present this commendation to Conservation and Environmental Lands Management. And so here is what we have. "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Hillsborough County Conservation and Environmental Lands Management for its exemplary work in safeguarding wetlands, efforts that enhance wildlife habitats, and improve water quality throughout Hillsborough County. From 1989, I'm sorry, '88 to 2019, Hillsborough County through its Jan K. Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program acquired an amazing 63,526 acres of conservation lands, of which 31,597, not to be too exact, are wetlands. The county commission's environmental conservation, the county's Conservation and Environmental Lands Management staff perform crucial management activities, and that includes exotic plant removal, prescribed burnings, and where appropriate, wetland restoration and related hydrological improvements on these lands. In addition, the ELAP program partners with local, state, and federal environmental agencies to restore and enhance both freshwater and estuine wetlands over multiple preserves, including Cockroach Bay, Wolf Branch Creek, and the Lower Green Swamp. The Environmental Protection Commission of Hillsborough County in particular has provided the county with significant grant funding to implement wetland restoration projects. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby commend the Hillsborough County Conservation and Environmental Lands Management for maintaining our ecosystem integrity throughout the county, and wishes its continued success." Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I'll just say, your department's work is a big reason why Hillsborough County is such a wonderful place to live, work, and play. The ELAP program is close to my heart, but as you know, as you all know, I think that it's close to many of the commissioners' hearts here, and we treasure it greatly, and I think it's a legacy for generations to come that they'll be able to appreciate these special places in Hillsborough County. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure, thank you. Well, thank you, Commissioner, and board members, for this great honor today. First of all, I just want to say that it is truly an honor to work with such a great staff, such a great group of dedicated individuals. Everyone on this team is so passionate about managing and protecting the natural resources on our ELAP sites, and have been, in some cases, for decades. A lot of experience on this team. And for these folks, this is a career, it's not just a job. This is their passion. This is about making a difference. And when you can get that, that trait, that characteristic, and then, of course, the buy-in of everyone in terms of what we do, of course, we do prescribed burns, exotic plant control, habitat restoration. Some of these projects are very glamorous, and some are perhaps not so glamorous, exotic plant control being one. Nevertheless, that particular task is very important and can be very rewarding, given how much there is out there. So I couldn't ask for a better group of folks, more productive group of colleagues. Over the last couple of years, we've asked our staff to meet certain performance goals and measures. We've raised the bar pretty high, especially for prescribed burning and exotic plant control. And I tell you what, every time that we've asked them to meet a goal, they have met that challenge. They've done that now for the last two to three years, and I'm so happy with the team that we have assembled, not just the folks here, but of course, the other folks that are in the field today actually doing the work. So I appreciate it. Again, Commissioner, this is very, very unexpected and very appreciated, and I know our folks here appreciate it as well. And thank you to the board members as well for this award and for your continued support of the ELAP program. Mr. Gremlie and I will be coming to you over the next several months with more ELAP acquisitions, and we're happy...
I just can't wait.
Yeah, yeah, we're very excited about that. And Bonnie, we are, we're spending the money diligently and quickly, so thanks again, Commissioner, really appreciate it.
We'll just go back here. You're all lined up, all right. All the work here. Okay, would Beth Chanel and the Field Maintenance Service Division Director, Richard Cummings from Water Resources, please come forward? Is there anyone else? The team, I always like the team. Thank you. Great, good to see y'all here. Are we picture perfect yet? Every year, the Florida section of the American Waterworks Association presents its Water Distribution Systems Awards, System Awards, to public utilities whose outstanding performance during the preceding year deserves special recognition. The Hillsborough County Water Resources Field Maintenance Division entered in the Division Eight category, the largest division in the competition. The dedicated staff completed an intensive 1,083-page application, wow, derived from an over 3,600-page report. The report was completed by county staff who chronicled what the department has achieved in seven fields of study: water quality, operations records, maintenance, professionalism, safety, emergency preparedness, and cross-connection. It's no surprise that Hillsborough County Water Resources excelled in every measure. The department's hard work and unwavering commitment led the Florida section of the American Waterworks Association to present the Hillsborough County Water Resources Field Maintenance Division with its 2019 Water Distribution System Awards, or Award. Congratulations. And would, you're going to accept it here? Would you like to say a few words?
I would, thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Kemp and board members, for recognizing the department's Field Maintenance Services in this award. Each and every day, this group of professionals works to provide outstanding service 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They basically keep it in the pipes, that's where we want it to stay. When things are outside the pipes, obviously, it's a disaster in many people's eyes, and it's the cavalry that hits the road. These guys are the troops that make that happen. I'm so proud of their accomplishments and their leadership in the industry, they are second to none. Thank you all guys. I'd also like to take the opportunity to give Rich Cummings, the Division Director of this organization, to be able to say a few words for his staff.
Sure.
Thank you, Director, and thank you commissioners. It is a real honor working with these guys, doing the work that they do. That largely goes unherited. We're a different kind of first responder. We're there 24/7. We're on Super Bowl Sunday to make sure you can flush that toilet, you know, for your big day. This is a true collaboration. We basically have the Yankees and the Rebels, the North and the South, but they work very well together, so we're after reconstruction. You turn on your water anytime at your home, you expect it to come out, you have no expectations of anything other than that. If something other than that happens, it's a panic. So these are the guys that make it happen. They do things like working on water meters, they maintain your fire hydrants, they make sure that water goes to critical facilities like nursing homes and hospitals and stuff like that. So I really appreciate having the opportunity to lead these guys. Every day, they make me look good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, this concludes our ceremony for the day. I want to thank all of those for being here, especially those that stuck around the state through the entire event. Thank you very much. I want to thank all the award recipients for the invaluable work they do to make Hillsborough County a better place to live, work, and play. And with there being no further business with us this morning, we adjourn.